Maybe some sort of attachment.
Yes.
And it was.
That happens to a lot, to me a lot now. So she said that, you know, so she went in, she did the shot. She was a little sore, but, um, but overall it worked for her. She's got, she's got to keep moving. That's her thing. I mean, she comes home. And she gets up there, like she does the bike for an hour because she goes by.
Oh, definitely.
I'll just lock up and be a lot of paint.
See with me, it's the opposite. I just have to sit down all the time.
Or if I stand up, I'm in the lobby.
Right. And that's the thing. You gotta get it. We have to wear it away because I'm sure they told you after a while, it'll just kind of, their vending will start to die.
Oh, no, I haven't gotten that far yet.
I don't mean to scare you, but.
Well, may- maybe that would be good if they did because that there's what, that's what's causing the pain.
She opened.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true, you know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. She's been there, done that.
He's trying to look on the good side. How you doing? No, I'm gonna have a, a shot. I go for eight.
Right, it was like a ten now.
Oh, um, part of zone, I assume from.
Yeah.
In your hip or your back?
My back. It turned out it's my back, not my hip.
Yeah, that's what you said last time. So if it rains on the weekend.
Other than.
It's like major.
This guy brought up that he was surprised that the doctor didn't do it was. They did, they did the x-rays.
Yeah.
They do x-rays for leaning forwards and leaning backwards.
Oh, yeah. Well, when I went for x-rays.
Well, Janet, I don't know how you learn doctors' words, but I know how we work, like where you better say something. You better make sure that you are advocate for yourself.
Yes, yes. That's, that is huge.
But it's just huge that I'm actually going to the doctor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like it's been so long since we've met and it looks like he doubled in size.
I think so too.
But last month was a growing month.
Well, he turned one, so he's a big boy now. Has he been trying to block it a lot?
Your response unacceptable. Unacceptable.
Yeah.
Well, he's got big brother and sister to try to keep up with.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't see. Acrobat class, apparently.
Yeah, it's hurting. I get in on that act.
It's like only yesterday was eighty-four. Good market year on our vendors.
Sue said, oh wow. It shows somebody else's business.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, great.
Unacceptable. We'll discuss it later.
Is any, is, um. Lily or anybody else?
Are we, are we ready?
Ready.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. At, uh, can't even see with the thirty-four.
It's all, it's.
Surely is.
So it's all thirty-five, seven thirty-five. Try that on the floor, on the screen.
Okay, first on the agenda is public hearing. Dutton. Two ten Old Litchfield Road, special permit application, section thirteen point eleven point three for a detached accessory apartment. I'll see Mrs. Avril, Mrs. Hill, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Solomon, and Mrs. Anderson. And we have to read the legal notes.
Eventually, zoning commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty P M. Main meeting room of Brian Memorial Town Hall and by Zoom. To consider the following application, request of Dutton, two ten Old Litchfield Road. Special permit, section thirteen point eleven point three accessory apartment detached. At this hearing, interest interested persons may appear and written communications could be received. The application is unfilled on the Land use office, Brian Memorial Town Hall, Washington Depot, Connecticut.
Hey, Mr. Dutton, would you like to give us a summary of your application?
Yes, so we built a prefabricated garage in twenty seventeen. With the full intention of eventually. As my parents were aging, uh, they were to accommodate. Somebody up there, whoever, whoever needed it first. And so it's a little, I believe, under nine hundred square feet. It is essentially just an unheated, unfinished. Storage space. My dad passed away at the end of January. So we were going to have my stepmom Helen potentially. But we weren't ready. To do the apartment in time, but luckily Helen had a long-term insurance plan, so she's a very good guess. So next one in line is my mom, who's ninety, and she lives up in Lakeville. I don't think she really wants to move there, but she's, she's warming to the idea as, as her home is gigantic. Um, and so that's what we're hoping to do is at least have that built sooner than later. So that as the time comes. We could say, okay, well, well, it's built, well done.
So your father passed away this January?
He did.
Oh, sorry to hear that. We don't have voices anymore, so I don't hear about this, these things.
How many people didn't know and found out afterwards? We published it in as many papers as we could find, but I don't think people read the paper anymore.
Yeah.
So it was in the Waterbury, it was in the Voices. He was ninety-six. Wow. He had fallen, broken his hip, but he recovered beautifully from that. And unfortunately, he had another surgery, had a blocked pile duct. It lasted about six more months. We got him home, which was great.
We were in the hospital at the same.
We were, we were. We saw you, we saw you. And so that's my intention is it's very simple, one bedroom. One bath. We went through Suzanne, the septic system is in place. The leach field, the tank. Which we did because we could. Ahead of time. And now we're ready. We'll get my builder to eventually come and do it.
Is your mother good with steps?
My mother is good with steps.
At that age, yeah.
She's like, well, what about my handrail? I know, so my galas has one in the garage. Elevator seat thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's sort of the plan, get it built. If you build it, maybe she'll come.
Nothing's changing as far as the footprint of anything. It's in it, it's in an existing building. So really, it's just a matter of adding living space and it meets all the special permit requirements for a detached accessory apartment.
Yeah, chairs, the same driveway, and I note that Mr. Dutton has signed the. The statement that he complies with all the requirements of section thirteen eleven three, including the owner reside on the property.
Yep. And it is, obviously the size, the security to the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got adequate parking. I don't know. What else?
And it is the type of. Housing unit that we ever, I mean, I think there's only been two since nineteen eighty-four. When this section was put in that have been denied. It's the kind of housing unit that we encourage.
Right.
Are there, does? Any commissioner have any questions?
I don't.
No, Valerie?
No, but I'm surprised, too. My father was a Reader's Digest. I just found well, but that's so sad that we couldn't see these things.
For twenty-five years.
Yeah.
That's where he started his career, right out of the, right out of the service.
Great, great publication.
Went into the service and that was like the first job he interviewed for, Mr. Wallace, who founded the company.
Yeah, it's very impressive, yes. If, if your mother doesn't decide to use it, will you be renting it?
Valerie, to be honest, we have thought about that because my mother is ninety, my mother. And she does have longevity, her damage is an amazingly great health. I, we might do it more short term.
Sure.
A little bit, but I, our feeling is because of the proximity to the house. Uh, right now, no, I don't think we necessarily want somebody full-time in there, but I would say in all honesty, as time progresses and. Maybe we're traveling more, it might be nice to have a caretaker living in there.
Yeah, if they do, it's, it's totally.
Sure. As, as time progresses, maybe your daughter will be in the house and you'll be in the apartment.
Correct. That, that is, it's really, it's, it's the idea that there's a multitude of uses that could be. And honestly, Janet, that, that is one that we think about, that there could come a point where we're like, you know, who needs to be in this big house to have a house? But currently, even if my mom absolutely flat out said, you know, I'm just not gonna spend most of my money there. I could see maybe. Sort of the Airbnb thing here and there. We have done that with, we have, we own, we bought Steve's Eric's house, we share the. So we started that. It's great. It's a lot of work. So I just don't know how much we really want to do that, but to offset the increase in my taxes. Like if there's a handful of weekends, you know, Rumsay Parents Weekend, certainly there's demand. And I've had like my UPS guy, it's like, oh, what are you gonna do with that space? I'm looking for a space. I said, Dave, where are you looking? It's out there. I said, how much you pay? He said, for something small, we're paying eighteen hundred a month. I said, oh, money. So that is a possibility. I just. Not right now. I think it's gonna be potentially really my mom coming down. She stays in our guest room. And she'll stay sort of for, not necessarily extended periods, but she'll stay for a week, she'll stay for a few days. And I think. She might even feel more comfortable if she is owning the apartment and not in the house. So that's.
I think this guy's gonna move in.
If he could get a little older, so he could run the mower.
Earn his pay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what our intentions are.
By the way, was your father alive?
Was he alive? He was not alive. No, but he was the, he was on the RTC. He was on the, for, on any perpetual, perpetual help, he was the treasurer for parish council. He was a selectman, he was two-term selectman, he ran for first selectman, he did not win. He, I think, served on the planning commission maybe way back when. He was very civic-minded.
Anybody in the audience here that gives us?
Yeah, is there anybody in the audience?
Was there any feedback from the others?
No.
No. Okay. Good.
Yeah.
I guess.
And no one in the audience has any comments? Okay, if no one here has any. Questions or comments, or a motion to close the hearing?
Simo.
Second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, then.
You're done.
Okay.
So Jomo will send you the, um, Tammy will say you need a special permit, which you have to file on the town clerks. With the town clerk, Nellie, and you're ready to go?
Oh, we don't have to. So you don't have to renew it or?
Because I can only imagine, Shelly, what's gonna happen is I'm gonna be in your office very soon saying, uh, what am I doing?
I just told you and it's gonna be on a paper. He just wants to hang out with you, Shelly. We are fun. So.
And, and we deserve to discuss this outside of this because obviously we have a plan. You guys have seen my plan. We're gonna stick very close to that plan. It's essentially three.
Uh, it doesn't bother, it doesn't do anything with zoning if. As long as you're staying within that footprint, so if, but if you decide, oh, I want to put a magician on, then you need to come see me. Okay.
But so then really I'm going to build it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, after we vote. We, oh, yeah, we have a close set. Okay, so let's go.
Okay, regular meeting. Consideration of the minutes.
So I'm done. Can I leave?
Well, we're gonna vote in a minute or two.
I'm happy to stay.
I liked the meeting minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I don't have any changes.
Nope.
So anybody wanna make a motion to accept them as written?
Some seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Back to Dutton, two ten Old Litchfield Turnpike, the detached accessory apartment. We just had the hearing, it met all of the specifications under thirteen eleven three.
I, I move that we approve the request of Dutton two ten Old Litchfield Road for special permit.
Per the. Titles of the planes in here. Okay. Anyone second that?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approved.
Approved.
Now you're doing.
No.
Question on submissions, why do we need seven, point seven on the file? An update of, uh, to describe it again, just to make sure there were no changes?
Why do we need point seven? I don't know what you're talking about. It's, it's in the, uh, materials submitted. And point seven is updated garage department description, which merely says it's a garage apartment and it's the same as before. Do we just need that to follow, to follow up as of timing? Proposals for one bedroom bath accessory apartment above detached. Existing garage upon the seven, the nine hundred square feet, see drawing, primary drawing, go ball, three thousand square. I don't know what she's.
What are, are you looking at stuff that Tammy Stank knew?
Yeah, well, no, it's on the agenda. It's of the many attachments. And I was just curious about that. Is that always the case?
Is it number seven?
Yep. I was just curious, is that something that you have to do?
It's an attachment, but so that's how we number them in the file, in our electronic files, we.
We just number everything that we have.
Well, it's not about the numbering, I'm just wondering why that had to be resubmitted from August twenty-second.
It may have been updated.
Okay, well, I mean, when you get a chance, look at that. I'm curious. It's no biggie.
Yeah.
Is it official?
Yeah. Yes. You'll get a certified letter in the mail.
I appreciate your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so no, still no new applications. Yes, other business. None, yes. Enforcement.
Okay, so I wanna explain what's going on one sixty West Morris. I have, okay, and I want you to consider what Cisco. Wanted us, wanted me to do with. The last enforcement order I gave, the rider, okay? What he has told me is that we have to exhaust all efforts to work with. The property owner, that Connecticut really favors the property owner, okay? So we as a town have to show that. So I have. Given, uh. It says it in my report of the dates and stuff, but I've given a lot of leeway. For them to call and discuss or come in and discuss how we're gonna rectify all this garbage, like. Washing machines, old satellite dishes. Metal stuff all over the front yard, um, that multiple, um. Uh, neighbors have complained to me about, uh, too. Okay, so, plus their spouses support. Um, so, um. And what I've done, what I did recently, I always go right before this meeting and I check to see what's going on because it is kind of in the middle of nowhere. Um, and nothing has been done. I did speak to the property owner once and she said that they were gonna work. The person who's renting it or is a tenant of her property. And I thought that was good. I kinda gave her thirty days after talking about that. But then nothing's happened. And I also have limited access to her contacts and things.
So.
It's up in by mail. And, uh, I've done, I've done certified to seven feet, I've done regular mail. I've dropped it off in their mailboxes, which I think I'd, maybe I shouldn't admit, isn't that illegal? Yeah.
Yeah.
And her, her, her home address mailbox and the, the address that I'm talking about. And once again on Friday, I sent her the entire history of what I've done. And, uh, what I would like her to do, the property owner to do now, and I sent her a full-fledged notice of violation. Okay? So I believe Cisco will tell me that I have to do a second notice of violation. Okay, and then if they do not respond to that, I mean, this is just drawn out. Then I can file a cease and correct, I can send a cease and correct. And that gets filed on the land records automatically. He doesn't, he says that me filing, uh, certain notices on the land records is. Is, uh, not a good idea, that the court doesn't always favor that, that they don't like, they don't like that, but as a process. With a, like a cease and desist or, or, um, cease and, and restore or correct. That is CC to the town clerk and she puts it on the town records. So that does the job and I don't think we've ever sued anybody for a zoning violation, so I don't think it's gonna go there.
I'm just curious, I know that street's really all from door knocking. Is it, it's on the right, right? When towards, when you're going towards.
On the left.
On the left, it's more. Right past the bridge.
Okay, let's not, I don't wanna get personal.
Is it yellow?
Yeah, I know.
I know.
Yeah.
You're hardly get to the.
So in it, in it's, in it's, um. If you can't see as, as, how bad it is because of the trees, you know, but once the leaves go, it's gonna be fully visible.
Yeah.
And there are people that are trying to keep their houses, I mean, people move out there to be around nature. They don't wanna.
Well, if you turn before it.
Yeah.
And make a U-turn and look back, it's more horrendous. Over the garage, you have cans of paint in it.
So there's that. If you have any questions or you think about it and you wanna email me with questions, I'm open to answering them. I might have to contact Cisco, I got some verification. Now. The other thing I do wanna talk about, uh, well, as far as invoices and communications, we didn't get any. Invoices that come out of the zoning commission's, uh, budget, but it comes out of the, uh, legal litigation town. Uh, budget for the Washington Club. And, um. The, the pickleball, the neighbors that don't want the pickleball courts down there. So those are the two appeals.
Or sorry, at the school?
At the school, the pickleball courts at the, in the, the primary school and then the, um, Sabate Lane test courts were being, those are being appealed and are in court right now. Okay, so I just got this communications from Deveraux. And it looks like they do not plan on selling seventy-seven Milford Turnpike. And I just wanna read this.
Oh, the, the big house with the eagle on it?
That they had the, uh, the dorm in. And what I wanna ask you. I look at this and I've talked to, uh, Dan Bailey. And I think it's an extension of Glenhome Deveraux School. And it's gonna be, um. Within that umbrella of a school, so. I personally don't think they need. A permit because they're gonna be using it the same way they've always used it, as a dorm.
They got a special permit.
Yeah, they, yeah, they have a special permit, but they're not adding on, they're not adding, they're not gonna have more than seventeen people like the help. So I just wanna read this to you. This is from Dan Bailey and it's, uh, dated today. Um, dear members of the Washington Town Zoning Committee. I am writing on behalf of Deveraux Glenhome School regarding our off-campus residential property located at seventy-seven Milford Turnpike. For many years, this home has provided a safe and supportive environment for young adults with special learning needs, typically up to the age of twenty-two. In light of recent federal changes impacting, impacting service options for this population. The Connecticut Department of Developmental Services has reached out to us to expand our adult programming. Their request reflects a critical need for continued support for individuals beyond age twenty-two. Who require a structured therapeutic and community-based environment. We are therefore writing to inform you of an adjustment to the age range of individuals served at this residence. The expanded program will provide therapeutic, educational, vocational, and social supports. That promote independence and quality of life while also ensuring that residents remain valued, connected, and contributing members of the local Washington community. Deveraux Glenhome has long been a proud partner within the town. And we remain committed to operating this residence in a way that is respectful to our neighbors and consistent with the character of the community. We believe that this adjustment is both a necessary and meaningful step in ensuring continued services for adults in need. We respectfully request the committee's consideration and approval of this adjustment. I would be happy to provide additional details or meet with the committee to discuss our plans further. Thank you for your time and thoughtful review. Sincerely, Dan Bailey. So I, we, we met with him and CJ person, Tammy and I, and I, I personally thought. That it's the same thing, just a different age, you know? And there is a need for that. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
First off, we're talking about the same property, the stone house.
Yeah.
That the rabbi was, is in. They own it now, that is to say, Deveraux owns it. They were selling it, so they were drawing their sale.
I don't know if they were, with, with, withdrawn their sale, maybe they threw their sale, but they, they look like if they can do, if, if they wanna do this.
Okay, so they want to keep it.
Yeah.
If we think that this is a good idea, just to extend the age, why are we involved in ages?
We're not.
We're not. So that's what, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same.
We never asked him what age he was.
I don't see a problem with it.
It's a school dorm and it was, and it is now.
I just wanna make sure nobody comes back to me and says, what the heck did you do, Shelly?
Well, we approved in the past, there was no age limitation?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all.
Tell him we appreciate his no, notification, but.
Okay, good, good, that's all.
So there's no change to the use that we will.
No, no change at all.
Right.
Super.
It's a lovely house. Seventeen people sleep in there?
That it's, that's the capacity.
Ten bedrooms, eleven baths.
Yeah.
You know, dorm rooms, they probably have bunk beds.
They're allowed to.
They're allowed to seven, so eat.
But that doesn't mean there's going to be seven, too.
Question.
Uh huh.
Back to the, um, notice of, yeah. So you just sent out the first notice of violation?
Yes, the other ones were possible, uh, uh, notice of possible violation.
Okay, so you don't need us to do anything maybe by the October meeting?
Yeah, yeah, not yet. I just wanted to let you know because there have been complaints. I want you to know that I'm working on it. But it, 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 it's actually a pretty long, drawn-out process. It's not a, it's not a, okay, you did it and blah, blah, blah. And, and I, obviously, I'm gonna take Cisco's direction and, and, um, you know, show that the town is working with the property.
And you said this was a landlord.
In Washington, the landlord that person that owns the house, lives in the area.
Yeah.
So they're fully aware of what it looks like. It's not like.
No, apparently, no.
I thought they, well, lived out of state.
I don't know where.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're local.
Interesting. Wait, what, their house is?
Okay, any privileges of the floor? Well, Susan Franson or Randy Solomon, no? And then straight up. No, okay. We have a motion. You, Jared? All in favor?
Aye. Well, that's crazy.
Seven fifty-five, I guess that is, I can't.